Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
We're going to ask everyone to stand and have our invocation by Vice Mayor Gary Miller, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that several of our school board members are here, and I ask them, as well as all of us, to pray for our children. Tonight, as we speak, a young child is being born in a Memphis, Tennessee hospital. David Miller Rose is coming into this world. He was conceived during one of the worst pandemics in modern history, a quarantine baby, if you will. He's come into a world of turmoil, violence, wars, racism, hatred, poverty. I pray for him and hope that one day he won't be the victim of senseless violence, children gunned down in our city streets as collateral damage from adults fighting or embalmings of schoolchildren and as of schoolchildren. I pray that he never have to go to war in a foreign country, as his father has, and fight in a place called Iraq or Afghanistan. I pray that he will not be placed in a downtown Memphis clinic where COVID is rampant as she tries to save people. I pray that he will not judge others because of the color of their skin, their religion, or whether they're rich or poor. But then, Lord, we shouldn't be judging anybody. The final call, the final judgment is yours. We need to learn to accept people for what they are and not be critical because they are a different color. My circles of friends, circle of friends include people of all races, religions, economic status. May he have opportunity for a good education, just like his great-grandfather, who he will never know, but was the first of his family to leave a poor farming family and go out, get on a train, and go to college. As councilmen and school board members, it is our obligation to ensure that all our children are safe from violence, that they not only have excellent teachers, but they will have excellent facilities, modern facilities, to learn in, that they have equal opportunity for good jobs and are able to support their families. It is up to us to ensure the safe and prosperous future for all of our children of all ages. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to everyone, those who are viewing at home, good evening. Those who are here in chambers, as Dr. Miller stated, want to welcome our school board chair and members of the school board, along with our superintendent. We welcome you all here. Congratulations to all of the graduates, and we're real excited about that. We have a proclamation tonight. If you would come forward, Liz Cervantes, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Proclamation reads, whereas the city of Danville recognizes the underrepresented LGBTQ community and the issues that this community faces, and whereas having a positive stance against discrimination and violence toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people promotes their dignity, equal rights, and increases their visibility as a social group; and whereas celebrating the diversity and inclusion of the entire LGBTQ community across all races, ethnicities, gender expressions, faiths, and socioeconomic status will create a positive impact on the Danville community as a whole; and whereas increasing the civic and economic participation, mental health, and overall well-being of LGBTQ community members; and whereas all around the United States, June is celebrated as LGBTQ Pride Month in commemoration of the Stonewall riots of 1969 in recognition of the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. Therefore, I, Alonzo L. Jones, Mayor, and members of the Danville City Council, the city of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Danville, and applaud the efforts of Danville citizens to promote diversity and inclusion, given at my hand this first day of June 2021. You may come and get your certificate, and please feel free to give some remarks, please.
This is our third proclamation from you guys, saying that June is our official LGBTQ Pride Month. So thank you so much. Your support is needed. Your allyship is needed. We appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you so much. Please come to the new Danville Otterbot Stadium on June 24th. We're going to have a Pride Night. It's going to be super fun, and it's on Thursday, so I hear that's Thirsty Thursday, if that's something you're into. We have a lot of other events that are coming out that we kind of threw together thanks COVID. Please visit our website, kaleidoscopeva.org, and I'm more than happy to spell that out for you if you want me to write it down. Thank you so much for your support. Keep being an ally.
You so much. Going to ask Alexis Erkhart to come forward, please. This is also Business Appreciation Week. Alexis, good evening to you. Whereas the city of Danville is pleased to have a thriving business, a base of business and industry to support the local economy, and whereas those businesses provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of the city of Danville, and whereas these businesses provide local revenues from which the entire local citizenry benefit, and whereas these businesses also make significant contributions in our communities to promote educational opportunities for our children and promote a variety of activities which increase the quality of life of the area, and whereas we recognize and appreciate these businesses. Now, therefore, I, Alonzo L. Jones, Mayor, and members of the Danville City Council, the city of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 7 through 11, 2021, as Business Appreciation Week, and the city of Danville, Virginia, given at my hand this first day of June 2021. Please come and get your certificate, and feel free to give some remarks. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, council, we appreciate you so much, and let me just say, it is wonderful to see you in person. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Just wanted to thank you for your ongoing support. Business Appreciation Week, as you probably know, is a longstanding partnership among the city of Danville, Pennsylvania County, the Chamber, and the River District Association, and we work together. Thanks to Corey Tighe-Bobe and her team. Kim Custer is the magician who puts all of this together, so, so much credit to Kim for leading this team and putting this together. I think each of you would agree that this year more than ever, we want to thank our businesses and honor our businesses in this community, large and small. I'm honored to be a leader in this community, where in this last year, we've seen the resiliency and the support and the camaraderie and the fellowship among our businesses, and I'm just so grateful to be a part of it. And since I have the microphone, if I could take a point of personal privilege and thank our city manager, who I think has just done, with his team and with this council, has just done a tremendous job throughout this pandemic, and I just want to thank each of you, and Mr. Locking, thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. Thank you so much. Under Communications, visitors who desire to speak on an item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Any citizen who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Good evening. Please state your name and your address for the record, and good evening again to you.
Drew Herring at 449 Chadwick Drive. As I've already stated, my name is Drew Herring. I'm the senior pastor at West Main Baptist Church, and I'm here on behalf, not just of West Main, but of several local congregations. We have come together with the permission of the Parks and Rec Department to construct a community COVID-19 memorial wall at the park that is at the intersection of Union and Main Street under the Home sign. We put it together yesterday, and it'll be open for the next seven days for all of us to go and to spend time in silence, or prayer, or to write a message of remembrance for someone in this community or in your family who's been lost to COVID, to leave flowers, to leave photos. And then on next Tuesday, June the 8th, at 7:00 PM, we're going to have a community service of hope and remembrance with this minister's group, as well as the Danville Area Coral Arts Society. We are a group of Christian ministers, but our hope and prayer is that this would be open and inclusive to everybody of all faiths, or no faith tradition, or no affiliation. We've all been through a year of so much loss and trauma and pain, and we hope this will be a time to stand together in solidarity and remember and grieve together and find hope together as we move forward as a city. So I'm here tonight to personally invite you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Council, and everyone in this chamber, and everyone at home, to join us, to come to the wall, to spend some time in remembrance, and also to be at the service next Tuesday night, and also, as you're able to use your platform as leaders, to invite folks to be a part of this so that it can truly be something for this whole city. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all that you do for this great city.
Before you walk away, give that time and date again, please.
So it is next Tuesday, June the 8th, at 7:00 PM, and it's at the Home Park at the corner of Main and Union Street. We'll have music from the Danville Area Coral Arts Society.
Councilman Campbell.
That's what I was asking, Mr. Mayor, if he could repeat that again, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. We're still on Communications. Anyone who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Anyone who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Under meeting minutes, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under appointments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend appointments to the various boards and commissions. A resolution reappointing Jesse Barksdale to the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing William Allgood to the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing Philip Hall to the Airport Commission. A resolution appointing Johnny West to the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program. A resolution reappointing Sheila Baines to the Danville Community College Board. A resolution reappointing Tammy Warren to the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution reappointing Demetrius Cruz to the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution reappointing R.G. Lackey to the Danville Development Council. A resolution reappointing Shelby Irving to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board. A resolution reappointing Anna Kotsman to the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution appointing Steve Merricks to the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution appointing Mark Holland to the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. A resolution reappointing Taquan Graves to the Social Services Advisory Board, and a resolution reappointing Alexis Erhardt to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of granting special use permit at 424 Memorial Drive, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, it's my pleasure to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance granting special use permit application 2021-152 for residential and commercial uses permitted by right with lot frontage on the Dan River in accordance with Article 3L, Section C11 of the Danville Zoning Ordinance at 424 Memorial Drive, Street Parcel ID Number 21344 and 21322.
This was so exciting, and I saw all council members' hands go up. Second by Councilman Buckner, this is the white mere property. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under item B, consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to allow the city manager, planning director, or designated to initiate zoning ordinance amendments, I open the public hearing. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending the Chapter 41 entitled "Zoning Ordinance" of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986 as amended, more specifically to aim to Article 4, Section A, initiation of zoning amendments and changes by adding subsection 4, allowing the city manager, planning director, or their designees to initiate zoning ordinance amendments.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion, Councilman Whittle?
Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Anyone else? Discussion of the motion, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under appointments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend appointments to the various boards and commissions. A resolution reappointing Jesse Barksdale to the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing William Allgood to the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing Philip Hall to the Airport Commission. A resolution appointing Johnny West to the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program. A resolution reappointing Sheila Baines to the Danville Community College Board. A resolution reappointing Tammy Warren to the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution reappointing Demetrius Cruz to the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution reappointing R.G. Lackey to the Danville Development Council. A resolution reappointing Shelby Irving to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board. A resolution reappointing Anna Kotsman to the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution appointing Steve Merricks to the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution appointing Mark Holland to the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. A resolution reappointing Taquan Graves to the Social Services Advisory Board, and a resolution reappointing Alexis Erhardt to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of granting a special use permit at 424 Memorial Drive, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, it's my pleasure to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance granting special use permit application 2021-152 for residential and commercial uses permitted by right with lot frontage on the Dan River in accordance with Article 3L, Section C11 of the Danville Zoning Ordinance at 424 Memorial Drive, Street Parcel ID Number 21344 and 21322.
This was so exciting, and I saw all council members' hands go up. Second by Councilman Buckner, this is the white mere property. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Under item C, consideration of a referendum on a 1% sales tax increase for school construction, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I very much would like to make a resolution initiating a referendum to authorize the city of Danville to levy a general retail sales tax at a rate not to exceed 1% to provide revenue solely for capital projects for the construction or renovation of schools in the city of Danville, Virginia, in accordance with Virginia Code, Section 58-1, 605.1.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Vice Mayor?
Yes, as I said in my prayer, it's our obligation to make sure our children have safe, modern facilities to learn in, and this referendum, the state legislature passed a bill that would allow localities to vote this in for 1% sales tax in their area. This is not a council mandate, this is not a council action. All we're doing is putting it on the ballot in November for the public to decide. It will not be a tax on pharmaceuticals, drugs. It will not be a tax on food. It will be a tax on other materials. So this is something we sorely need. It's, as we see it, is the only way we're going to be able to pay for the school system that we need, the school buildings. Thank you.
Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order to be competitive in the world, we must have a good, not a good, I'm sorry, a great education. And in any facility where our students learn, help determine their success in education. So I'm asking the citizens, not a council decision, your decision, please support this effort to, so our children can have a safe school to attend, healthy school to attend, thrive, survive, and help our city continue to grow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, and just to follow up on what Councilman Saunders just said, to reiterate again, this isn't the nine of us up here making a decision. We feel it's important that it's the citizens who ultimately have the say in this, and so it will be the citizens who vote on this in November, and so it's entirely in your hands. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
I just want to say that I just want to ditto everything that's been said. I support this 100%, but not on that. I hope that the citizen of Danville will vote for this referendum. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mayo?
I agree with what's been said. Just want the citizens to understand that Danville's growing, and our children are first. We put that for cancel, and we want them to really consider this because we definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments, as that was forestated. Some of the cottages at our schools, and I've said this to the media, this is, we've been kicking this can down the hill for quite some time, and it's getting worse and worse. I think council members remember when R.R.EMM presented to us a couple of years ago four schools that were built in the 50s, Johnson, Langston, G.W., Woodbury, and no action was taking place on there due to funding. If you go to some of the schools and you see the cottages that are in the back of the schools, you see some of the HVAC units, our fingers have been crossed, hoping that there was no major, as of yet, capital cost to our schools. I want to commend the school board, superintendent, on what you all have done in our doing, but I say this all the time to our citizens, I'm not trying to persuade you to vote one way or another, but you just go and visit our schools for yourself. We have been very fortunate that these schools that were built in the 50s, that we have not had major costs, and the teachers, I want to, again, I can't say this enough, I just want to give my hats off to all the teachers and all the DPS staff, because I know what you go through, I see what you go through, but Clark, I want to yield to you, and I want you to share, this is just part one, and I want you all to listen very carefully, because coming in July, there's a part two to this referendum, Clark.
Yeah, there are two parts in order to get this referendum passed. This is the first part. This is the 1% sales tax, and that 1% sales tax will fund a bond, because we are a city and our charter requires us also to issue bonds for that. This will allow the school board to get a large amount of money upfront instead of doing a pay-by, pay-as-you-go. Currently, we are working on the second part of this, that bond council is working on that, so there will be two parts to the referendum. One will be the 1% sales tax, and the other will be approving bonds up to a certain amount, and I don't know that that amount has been determined yet, but that will give, that will allow all the money to come in at one time, and so that, so that everything can be done, instead of being staged, and everything can be done to fight price increases, but that will come in July, and then towards the end of July, both items, both resolutions will be filed with the Circuit Court. I think April, August 13th is the date that they have to be signed by, but we will walk them over probably before the end of the July and put them in the judge's hands and watch him sign them before we leave. So I just wanted you to know, in July, part two is coming, and that part two is to issue bonds, so that there will be one big amount set aside so they can go ahead and get everything done at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, just to piggyback what Clark said, when we first looked at this four or five years ago, those four schools, the cost was $126 million. Now it's $196 million. It ain't going to get any cheaper, and while we delay, the schools fall into further disrepair. So we need to do something as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Under item B, consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to allow the city manager, planning director, or designated to initiate zoning ordinance amendments, I open the public hearing. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the Chapter 41 entitled "Zoning Ordinance" of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986 as amended, more specifically to aim to Article 4, Section A, initiation of zoning amendments and changes by adding subsection 4, allowing the city manager, planning director, or their designated to initiate zoning ordinance amendments.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Councilman Whittle?
Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Anyone else? Discussion of the motion, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Under item B, consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to allow the city manager, planning director, or designated to initiate zoning ordinance amendments, I open the public hearing. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the Chapter 41 entitled "Zoning Ordinance" of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986 as amended, more specifically to aim to Article 4, Section A, initiation of zoning amendments and changes by adding subsection 4, allowing the city manager, planning director, or their designated to initiate zoning ordinance amendments.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion, Councilman Whittle?
And this, and so it will be the citizens who vote on this in November. And so it's entirely in your hands. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
I just want to say that I just want to ditto that everything that's been said. I support this 100%. But not only that, I hope that the citizen of Danville will vote for this referendum. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mayo.
I agree with what's been said. Just want the citizens to understand that Danville's growing and our children are first. We put that for cancel. And we want them to really consider this because we definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments as was that was fore stated. Some of the cottages at our schools, and I've said this to the media. This is, we've been kicking this can down here for quite some time and it's getting worse and worse. I think council members remember when R R M M presented to us a couple of years ago. Four schools that were built in the 50s, Johnson, Langston, G W, Woodbury. And no action was taking place on their due to funding. If you go to some of the schools and you see the cottages that are in the back of the schools. You see some of the HVAC units. Our fingers have been crossed hoping that there was no major, as of yet. Capital cost to our schools. I want to commend the school board superintendent on what you all have done and our doing. But I say this all the time to our citizens. I'm not trying to persuade you to vote one way or another, but you just go and visit our schools for yourself. It is, we have been very fortunate that these schools that were built in the 50s. That we have not had major costs. And the teachers, I want to, again, I can't say this enough. I just want to give my hats off to all the teachers and all the DPS staff. Because I know what you go through. I see what you go through. But Clark, I want to yield to you. And I want you to share, this is just part one. And I want you all to listen very carefully because coming in July, there's a part two to this referendum, Clark.
Yeah, there are two parts in order to get this referendum passed. This is the first part. This is the 1% sales tax. And that 1% sales tax will fund a bond. Because we are a city and our charter requires us also to issue bonds for that. This will allow the school board to get a large amount of money upfront instead of doing a pay by, pay as you go. Currently, we are working on the second part of this. That bond council is working on that. So there will be two parts to the referendum. One will be the 1 cent sales tax and the other will be approving bonds up to a certain amount. And I don't know that that amount has been determined yet. But that will give, that will allow all the money to come in at one time. And so that, so that everything can be done instead of being staged and everything can be done. To fight price increases. But that will come in July and then towards the end of July. Both items, both resolutions will be filed with the circuit court. I think April, August 13th is the date that they have to be signed by. But we will walk them over probably before the end of the July and put them in the judge's hands and watch him sign them before we leave. So I just wanted you to know in July, part two is coming and that part two is to issue bonds. So that there will be one big amount set aside so they can go ahead and get everything done at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Dr. Miller.
Yeah, just to piggyback what Clark said, when we first looked at this four or five years ago, those four schools, the cost was 126 million. Now it's 196 million. It isn't going to get any cheaper. And while we delay, the schools fall into further disrepair. So we need to do something as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Under item D consideration of, let me pause again to the school board superintendent. Madam Chair, thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Under item D consideration of amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance. For funds for the development of the Riverfront Park in the amount of $740,000. Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, move for adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance to provide. For an award from the state of Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. An amount of $740,000 for development of a riverfront park and appropriating of the same. First reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo, first reading. Under item E, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance for America. Rescue Plan Funds an amount of $29,142,851. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel, Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenues from the U.S. Department of Treasury. For the American Rescue Plan in the amount of $29,142,851 to be used to. As specified by the American Rescue Plan and appropriating same. First reading.
Second by Councilman Buckner, first reading.
Question.
Councilman Campbell.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you explain to the citizen what all this consists of when we see $29 million? Could you explain more detail, please?
Sure. The American Rescue Plan, which was adopted by Congress and signed by President Biden a few months ago. Provides localities with a certain amount of funding depending on their population and status within the C D B G program. For example, Danville, the formula came out through the Department of Treasury, which determined that. Uh, Danville would get 29 million. We will be getting it in two payments. One, we just received actually, but we're not able to spend any of those funds until city council adopts a budget. Uh, the next is supposed to come, the other half is supposed to come no sooner than one year later. So we will be waiting on the other half until at least a year later and see how that goes. Uh, the funds are very similar to the CARES Act funds that were provided by Congress last year. And those funds were used by the city of Danville under the guidance provided by the federal government. For things like helping people with utility bills, mortgage and rent payment, helping small businesses. To weather the storm of the pandemic. Obviously, it was there to help with the direct pandemic response itself. And it was also there to help provide marketing and, and, and P P E and. Safe practices, encouraging people to, you know, be safe during the pandemic. So anything related to the pandemic, what it didn't do last year with CARES Act. It didn't allow local governments to replenish lost revenue due to the pandemic. That's one of the key differences between the American Rescue Plan and the CARES Act. The American Rescue Plan does allow the city and all local governments to use a portion of the funding. To replenish any lost revenue that they could, we could justify was based on the pandemic. And there is a formula that the finance director will use to determine what that amount is. So that's one part of what we can use. The intention is to take carefully look at all of the rules and regulations associated with. How the city can spend those funds and to implement them in a similar way that the CARES Act funds were spent. You know, with the guiding principle being helping people to respond to the pandemic, helping our community. But the, the added benefit of this rescue plan funding is that they're really putting a focus on. Trying to help communities. Get, get out of the, what happened economically. Not only for individuals, but also for the community and for the city itself. So we want to focus in on how can we use these funds to respond to the pandemic? And how we can help our small businesses be successful, how we can provide economic opportunity for all citizens throughout the city. Equity is an important aspect of these funds. That is a highlight of what they want us to do. So the intention is to be careful with, with following the spirit of the legislation. And also have an eye toward what are the projects that we can do to produce a sustainable economic future for our community. So, uh, the other, the staff has been working pretty diligently. I've been working with our department heads on some ideas on, on how to invest these funds for the future. Uh, and for our community. And again, we're going to try to follow the same model with the CARES Act. Uh, the other aspect that we want to make sure to look at is thankfully, not too long ago, just a few months ago. We had the Investing in Danville Committee do some work in our community and we talked about ways that we can invest in our community. And so using that as a guiding principle for how we use these funds. So if it qualifies under the regulations for the federal government. And it also is something that the community had already told us was important to them through the Investing in Danville Committee work. Which was later followed up by the city council retreat. Those, that, those are the things that are going to guide how these funds are spent. And the, the goal again is to help improve people's lives, help reduce their costs, help to. Get people through the pandemic. Utility assistance, rent and mortgage assistance, that sort of thing for individuals. Grants for businesses to stay in business or to thrive. And help with, you know, maintaining the, the health, help, help with maintaining our, the health of our community. One of the other aspects that's important for our community is that. Is that we have good, stable housing with energy efficient homes. And that's an allowable expense. So I'd like to look at seeing what we can put in place to help people make their homes more energy efficient. Which would save them money in the short term and in the long term. So once you weatherize a home and you're able to lower somebody's utility bill, that's something that stays with them forever. And it also is the added benefit of helping improve our neighborhoods. And I think it meets, it's within what the citizens have told us is important to them. It's, it falls into a longstanding city council priority of improving housing in our community. And it will be a cost savings that people will be able to enjoy for, you know, the life of that weatherization in their homes. But that's just one small aspect. We haven't put together the full plan yet, but I think it's important to note that. The finance director and I are going to carefully make sure that we are not. Recommending that these funds be used for things that aren't allowed by the federal government. And there is a very complicated list of, of rules and there's guidance that is still yet to be determined on how this can be spent. But we have the basics. We're going to continue to follow those basics. And hopefully make some changes and improvements in our community for the betterment of all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Saunders.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Also, thank you, Mr. Manager. If I read this correctly, we have until December of 2024 to spend the money. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we look at that roughly three and a half years to spend this $22 million. Which give us a little more, hopefully, planning time after we spend this. And I don't know how you allocate it, you know, per year, per quarter. I don't know, but you have time to figure that out. I'm also hearing and seeing a lot of employers trying to find people to hire. And I don't know, I see Ms. Earhart is here, and I don't know if that's an employment issue. Or a employee issue, training. I just don't know. But this pandemic assistance is not going to last forever. And people do need to work and they need skills to get these jobs. And the way this city and this region is growing, a number of jobs will be here. And one thing, Mr. Manager, I'd ask your staff to, to look at. Uh, and that is with Scarf or Training. The city is growing. More industries are coming in, in here. We're expanding. We have a lot of people with a lot of skills. They're plumbers, they're brick masons, okay? There are carpenters, electricians. But they're not certified. They're not certified. And a lot of people won't hire them if they don't have certification to qualify for the employer's insurance. So if we can identify people who have all of these raw, good skills. But just aren't certified. And help get them certified to work as subcontractors and real contractors for businesses that may come here. Just a thought. And if you could think about that before the three and a half years are up. We appreciate that.
I appreciate you bringing that up and I didn't mention it in my comments earlier, but the staff has had a discussion about that very topic and it is important. If we can find a way for job training, job skills, get people certified, give them an opportunity to have. You know, get the work that's already out there, that's coming. That's certainly something that I think is allowed by the American Rescue Plan. There's a little bit of nuance. I think, you know, we could provide job training to those who are underemployed or not employed. I don't think we're allowed to do job training for those who are currently employed within a job. That's the responsibility of the business itself, I believe. But certainly that, I think what you're mentioning is something that we've been looking at and we want to design something to meet that need.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Mayor, that, Mr. Larkin, if you give out the money before the time end. Ms. Electa's Earhart will write you a check for $26 million. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, City Manager. Thank you, staff. You just sent me a message when we was on the 1% sales tax. They told me, Tommy, you wanted to give some comments about the 1% sales tax. Come on, come on to the microphone. I'm sorry that they were telling me that you had your hand up and I'm sorry.
Vaccine clinic today. They end at seven, so y'all need to work y'all meetings around my clinics. But it was very successful. I would just like to say that the N double A C P had a meeting. And one of the best meetings we ever had. We had Dr. Angela Harrison to meet with the members. And we are in full support and let the community know that we are definitely in full support. Of the tax and whatever we can do. And while I'm here. For the first year, N double A C P is going to. Join in with Kaleidoscope with a pride event. So I see my girl Leah is behind me and they ran away with the proclamation. Before I could get here to get a picture, but I'm just so happy. I saw a T-shirt that says Devil Proud, Proud somewhere online. Was that from you, Lee?
Yes, from Showcase, yeah.
Please, I need my T-shirt. I saw those rainbow colors and I was like, not Lee. But we would like to get our rainbow shirts. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, Lee, I know you probably said to yourself, Mr. Mayor, why you called Tommy up there? Under communication, City Manager?
I have nothing to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Deputy City Manager? Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
Uh, only to congratulate my alma mater on winning national championships, number 28 and 29 over the weekend.
You need to tell people, tell them who your alma mater is. Tell them who they are.
The University of Virginia.
Is that Virginia Tech?
City Clerk, call the row, please.
Mr. Mayor, before you start, I did forget something.
Yes, your alma mater won something too?
Unfortunately not.
Or did you want one of those shirts from Lee as well?
Yeah, that'd be great too. But.
Better be good news, Ken.
I should, I, I, I am very remiss and I was. Very happy to attend the Galileo graduation last Friday morning. Obviously, I'm a little biased in why I was glad to attend it because my daughter was one of the folks who graduated on Sunday. But it was a great event and I just think our, applaud the school system. For the work they did in helping shape my child to graduation and all the other children that graduated. And of course, G W had their graduation recently as well. So I'm just. I'm proud that I have two children that are products of the Danville Public School System. And who are on their way to bigger and better things. And I just want to express my appreciation for that and the, and the work of Danville Public Schools. Thank you.
I just want counsel to join me and I'm glad you mentioned that. There, when we talk about the graduations and promotions, sometimes I think we, people think that we leave out our administrators and our teachers and our faculty and our staff. And that's not the intent. But not only with graduations, there's a lot of promotions going on. Not only that, but college promotions. But I want the council to join me and given the entire staff of the school system what we can, because they've done a great job. These have been some challenging times. I'll tell you, Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Uh, yes, a couple of things. I was talking today with a patient. She came to me the first time, but her mother came to me many times several years ago and passed away. And we got to talking about how that woman was part of our medical family, how much we loved her and remembered her. And I was happy to see, saddened really by the memorial that's coming up next week. We have lost probably over, well, over two dozen of our patients, our medical family to COVID this year. Uh, three of them in one week in February. And it's really gut wrenching to have a patient you've been taking care of for 20 years and was healthy and doing well and then in two weeks die of COVID. It was a bad year. I also appreciated the LGBTQ. Several of my family members, my wife's family members would fall in this classification and they were included in my prayer. I didn't mention it by name, but they are included in the prayer. And finally, just an update, at 6:33 PM in Memphis, Tennessee, Nicholas Richard Rose. Came into this world at seven pounds and four ounces. Baby and mommy are healthy. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, you may want to tell them who are the proud parents.
Yes, David Ro, David Webster Rose. Interesting, for three generations, it's been David Webster Rose. This child breaks the mold. He's now.
Your daughter.
And so he's the father and he did fight in Iraq and Afghanistan. He was, he went to West Point and fought in those engagements. And my daughter, Lauren, many of you know her, the redhead. She weighs about 100 pounds and the baby weighed more than she did there for a while. But anyway, it came out good. We were sure it'd be a C-section, but she got it done.
Before Sue calls on counsel, because I know they're going to do this, what do you want to be called? Papa, grandpa? Because they're going to get ready, get ready for it, because it's going to happen.
It, they call you what they want to call you.
Madam Clerk.
My, my other grandson calls me granddaddy. He made that up. So you go with what they call you.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk.
Saunders?
Congratulations, Grandpa. I'd like to ask Mr. Vice Mayor for a copy of the invocation. That, that was a very, very touching invocation, sir, and I'd love to have a copy if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just run through a few things real quick. Again, remind folks, youth baseball signups are happening right now. City of Danville, you go to playdanvilleva.com. I think this Friday is the last day of signups. And had a lot of folks over the last couple of years say, we need to get youth baseball going again and getting it back up. So now's your chance. Sign your child up. They're going to be doing baseball this summer from ages five up to 13 and they'll break them down into different age groups. So again, if you have any interest whatsoever in, in baseball, or even if you don't think you do, just get them active this summer. Sign them up for youth baseball, playdanvilleva.com. Along the lines of baseball, the Danville Otterbots are having their first game of the season. First game of any season for them, brand new, this Thursday, 7 PM. Out at American Legion Field at Dan Daniel Park and they'll be there Friday night as well. And going to be a great summer at the ballpark watching them. So, so come on out. And another important event tomorrow is my birthday. I'll be 34 years old. And Councilman Buckner said he was sending a keg to my house tonight, I think. So when we leave here, I'm going to be. I think he said, for everybody that was invited, I think. So thank you for picking up the tab on that, Councilman. I'll see you later. But, um, no, all joking aside, I, I think he's telling me, no, he's not doing that. So. But, um, no, and all joking though, yesterday, of course, was, um, was Memorial Day. And I know a lot of folks, it's, it's a weekend of getting together with your family and having cookouts and different things of that nature. But, but certainly I think it's important to remember what, what that day signifies and what it's truly about. And honoring those who served our country and lost their lives in the service of this country. And so my wife is a nurse. She had to work yesterday. And so I was trying to find something to do with the kids. Uh, I had the day off and so I decided to take them up to the National D-Day Memorial in Bedford. And it was first time going up there. And if you've never been, you really, really, really should go. And of course, this upcoming weekend is D-Day. But just a powerful place to be. You know, the sacrifice of so many people and what they did for our country and it really just being there and, and hearing about it. It was something really special and reminds you what that day truly is about. And so when we left there, we, we went over to Peaks of Otter and we climbed the Sharp Top Mountain. It was me and the two kids and my son is six, my daughter is three. And so I ended up having to carry her most of the way up that mountain. And so it was, was not an easy task, but I'll tell you, when we got up there towards the top and you look out across. Just, just that gorgeous, gorgeous terrain and the mountains and everything around you and you look at the. God's wonder in action and just, I really think of just how blessed and how precious and special life is. So yesterday was, was a day of great reflection and appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, everybody that served in our military and we just, I can't thank them enough. The second thing is, is Danville's got three things available and that's jobs, jobs and jobs. And I say it again, jobs, jobs and jobs at, at every level. If you want to work, we've got jobs. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout out again to Kaleidoscope for all the great work they do in our community. A wonderful group of folks doing a lot of really cool stuff and can't wait for the event coming up at the Otterbots. That's going to be a great evening for sure. Also, I want to remind everybody of the Bridge Street Food Truck Rodeo is coming up this Saturday from 12 until 6. And I hope you all can make it out. It's going to be a good time as always. We've got bands coming, food trucks coming from all over, healthy options. And there's also going to be the lobster truck will be there as well. So I hope you all get a chance to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, it's good to see the superintendent and the school board members here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, in, in honor of Memorial Day, I want to pay homage to fallen servicemen and servicewomen. I also would like to acknowledge my mentor, Mr. Philip Campbell here and school board members, chairwoman and superintendent. We appreciate you for strengthening partnerships. That's something the mayor talks about a lot, his partnerships, and we're going to continue to show our support for us that. Congratulations to Business Appreciation Week and LGBTQ Pride Week for your proclamations. Appreciate that. And congratulations to the class of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, staff and school board, great year. Congratulations. Keep doing what you're doing. We have your full support. And the parents of George Washington High School have an end of the year party on June 4th, 2021. At the parenting pavilion from 7 to 11. If you haven't got your tickets, please see Mary Mundu. And I see Keisha Avery and a lot of other parents who are really giving our kids a send off and a good time. So if you haven't got your tickets, students, please do so. I had a chance to talk to Mary. We had a good conversation about it and she's really excited about this. Also, um, uh, Cedar Terrace is having the end of school, community and youth engagement day on tomorrow from 2 to 4 PM. If you are around, please go out to Cedar Terrace. They got a lot of food, games, bounce house, information booths, fun, fun, fun. We mentioned jobs and, and I know that there's plenty of jobs and employers are looking for help. Also, Danville Community College is doing a lot of training and I'm a part of that. And we actually did a lot of training for SO Pro Pack. They're doing a hiring and a lot of people are jumping on board with that training. And so, uh, City Manager, you're doing a great job. You need any help on that, please. I'd love to get with you on it. And because there's plenty of work, there's plenty of jobs coming and Danville is growing, so let's get ready. Thank you.
Thank you. The city council allotted monies for summer jobs. And school gets out Wednesday. And Earl, any update on when those young people will start working? Because we want those young people to know that these, as been stated, these jobs are available. There's a lot of partners in regards to these jobs. Any date when these young people can, and why you, why you getting that together? Also, Project Imagine, tonight, I was with them earlier. They have 15 young people that was in training. And I was with them tonight. So young people and parents, there are jobs out there. I yield to you, Deputy City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good. I think. Dr. Harrison is here. So I'd like to ask her if she would speak a word on behalf of the program. And they are doing a fantastic job of getting everything lined up. My recollection is, is the kickoff is June the 7th, but I want to make sure that's correct.
Good evening.
Our city council and certainly our Board of Education for supporting this in our community. So the students start June 7th. They will have a week of skills training. We have put together a very good week with the students. The parent meeting is tomorrow evening. We'll introduce them next Friday to their employer. Everybody's been placed. We feel good about the students going to the Goodwill, the 14 through 16 year old students, 25 of them. 25 of them will work for Goodwill, and our older students, 16 through 18, will work for a combination of the city departments and the school system and a couple of other outside agencies. So they're placed, they're ready to go, they've been notified, they're happy, they're excited, and everything is in place for them to start Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Also, there is a lot of, everybody knows that, what's going on throughout the country, but we want to make sure our young people stay busy. But there's a lot of activities going on in Danville Public Schools as well. Anything you want to elaborate on?
Correct. So we have, we have a robust summer school program for remediation and for new learning. We have a cyber camp going on at Johnson Elementary. We have our camp invention at the institute, and lots of opportunities for our children to be busy this summer.
Parents, please, please, have you heard it?
Take advantage.
And I hope, Mark, if you can put some of this out, some of this information out, we want our young people to be safe, we want them to be involved. So there's a lot of things going on, this is just to name a few. So thank you so much, Deputy City Manager. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Again, as mentioned, this weekend, there's a busy weekend. You talked about the rodeo food truck festival, and then later on that afternoon, there's going to be a youth event, a senior prom at Carrington Pavilion for our young people. So please, let's keep our young people. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for that prayer, Granddaddy, for that prayer, because it's very much needed. Once again, school is getting out. Please, 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 let's think about our young people. Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, all the activities that are going on in Danville, they can go to the Danville website, the city website, and keep up with all the activities. Am I right?
Yeah, that's a good question, because some kind of way, I think sometimes the information gets out there for the parents. City Manager, Deputy City Manager, as per Councilman Campbell, any way we can get this information out there, and I think probably a good idea as well for you all to think about, we don't mean to put you on the spot, but if Mark and Arnold could put something out to our community, since we know school is getting out with all of the activities that the school system is having, all of the activities, the jobs and everything else, but I'll yield to you to answer Councilman Campbell's question, but I really would like for us to put something out there, hopefully Thursday, because we know school is getting out on Wednesday, graduations, celebrations, but we want our young people and our parents to know, because everybody's not privy to social media, everybody's not privy to radio stations and newspapers, but maybe they'll be able to get this information. I yield to you, City Manager.
Certainly, we'll use whatever tool necessary to get the word out as much as we can. I think the best way to do that, though, is we can use our tools to get the word out, and if people, when they see it, if they know somebody who might be interested, if they would share it through word of mouth, because that's the best way to get it to those who don't have access to the ways that we get information out to people. So I would encourage people who are listening, anybody who sees information that we send out through all the means that we send it out, if they would tell their neighbors, tell their friends, tell their relatives that, hey, there are opportunities for young people in your family, young friend, you know, young people in your neighborhood to get involved in something positive for the summer. Part of it, of course, you know, is if you're not accessing information, if you're not looking for it, then you're never going to know about it. And so that the best way for those folks to get that information is if they hear from somebody else they know, some friend or neighbor or whoever else. So I think it's important for us as a community to work together to get these good opportunities out for people to hear about so that they can be taken advantage of, and I strongly encourage people to do that. We do our very best to get this information out in a variety of means, and we'll continue to do that, but it does take a little bit of word of mouth as well.
Thank you so much, Councilman Campbell. Before we go, I just want, before I adjourn, I want to ask the school board members to stand. Thank you all, please, for a great job on your budget and the great things that you all, let's go, Mayor. Just in case you don't know them, if you're standing again, this is school board member Terrell Payne, Brandon Atkins, the chair, Crystal Cobb, Mr. McWilliams, and school board member Philip Campbell. Thank you all so much for all the hard work that you all have done. Liz, Tommy, Alexis, thank you all so much for partnering with us and the things that you're doing in the community, and we're looking forward to so many exciting things in Danville. On that note, we are adjourned. Five minutes.